Councilmember Kine?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
And Councilmember Rodriguez is present on Zoom.
I'm here.
If you would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin. My pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands my nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mullen?
Thank you. The City Council met in closed session to discuss item 2A on the closed-session agenda. That is a real property negotiation involving the property located at 2008 Harbor Drive North, the Marina Suites. Negotiating party is Oceanside Small Craft Harbor District and Pacific Suites Incorporated, doing business as the Marina Suites Hotel. Under negotiations are price and terms for the lease of the property, and there was discussion and direction provided, but no action under the Brown Act to report. There was no meeting on item one on the closed-session agenda.
Thank you. With that, we'll go to our consent calendar, which are items one through 12, and I'd like to pull item seven, and I'll move approval of the balance.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Item number eight had speakers.
Pardon me?
Item number eight on consent calendar was pulled by the public.
Item eight as well? Okay.
And item number six as well.
We have a motion?
Oh, apologies. Only item number six was pulled by the public, not item number eight.
So we move approval. We have a motion in a second. Please vote. Councilmember Rodriguez, how do you vote?
I approve.
Okay. Motion approved, 5-0. So we'll go to item six.
On item number six, we have two speakers. Our first speaker is Colleen Bolch, to be followed by Sheri Mackin.
And once we have her ready...
Mrs. Bolch, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay. You could go, and I'll give you a one-minute warning as well. All right, and you can start now.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. My question is regarding this item is why are we spending money to realign a road for something that's just potential? There's, as far as my understanding is, they are not in any agreement yet with the city, and my further with that is, I understand you have a contract in place, but what guarantees that money being spent if those people decide to back out of this arena contract or arena proposal? There's a lot of money there that could go to streets that are here in the city that aren't being paved and need to be paved, and I live on one of them. My street hasn't been slurry-filled or repaved in the 39 years I've lived here. Thank you very much.
And our next speaker is Sheri Mackin, and... Whenever she's ready. Okay, is she ready? Okay, and Ms. Mackin, whenever you're ready, you could go.
Zeb, excuse me. I have a point of order here, please. When I sent an email to the city clerk's office, I specifically noted I wanted to speak on items, not on the items consent calendar for item six, seven, and 14. However, you all voted on seven already, and I didn't have the opportunity to speak.
Ms. Mackin, item number seven was pulled by Mayor Weiss.
I thought it was eight. No?
No, no. Items number six and seven were pulled, and the rest of the balance of the consent calendar was voted on unanimously by the council, so we're on item number six.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I'll go ahead and start now.
Okay.
I agree with Colleen Bolch's statement. I do not support paying for the road and utility realignment and additional infrastructure needed to serve the proposed arena development, especially when the funding is coming from Neighborhood Services, which is our parks, and Public Works, our streets. Those living in District 3 are in dire need of street and park repairs and have been told there's no money for such needs, only this small amount budgeted. This reminds me of the NRF project. Remember that one? No on L? You've got the cart before the horse again. Let's do the right thing for residents and not pay for things that a developer should pay for. Thank you.
And that concludes public comment on item number six.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. And item number six, did you actually call out what that was? Number six? Six is change orders for the El Corazon Aquatic Center project. And I wonder, both of the speakers seem to be speaking to item number seven? No?
Item six is the change order, Councilmember Sanchez.
The change order?
The change order that relates to additional expenses in part.
Aquatic Center.
Correct.
Right. Okay, so I just wanted to basically state that the staff report for item number six is called Change Orders for the El Corazon Aquatic Center Project, and I heard some concerns about roads being included as part of this project, and I don't believe that roads that would somehow benefit projects other than the Aquatic Center, I think, was a concern that I heard within those two comments. Are there any of these funds that will be used to, for the benefit of other projects rather than the Aquatic Center?
Honorable mayor, council members, Councilmember Sanchez, the change order number eight for the $311,000 is my mistake, is a misnomer in actuality. The work that we're doing out there is to address utility upgrades as well as realign a road. Whether the arena goes in or not, the improvements are needed because we're going to need infrastructure there anyway for the Park One improvement. Without these upgrades, we can't improve Park One. We can't build Park One. So if we don't do this now, the big issue is when we come to the point where we are actually going to be installing the improvements down the road as part of Park One or any additional development that may come through, that's already been approved through the specific plan.
Okay, so there is reference in the staff report regarding the arena project, but it's called the Aquatic Center, so is this going to benefit the Aquatic Center?
It will. Yes, ma'am. So we do the work now.
Is there any part of these plans that would not benefit the Aquatic Center and in fact benefit the, you know, a separate project which hasn't been approved?
No, these definitely benefits both the Aquatic Center and the Senior Center because if we come in later and do these improvements at a later date, we'd risk shutting down the Aquatic Center and the Senior Center in order to make these improvements at a later time.
Right.
And we felt this was the best time to do this.
So this is undergrounding of utilities?
Undergrounding of gas, undergrounding of electric, and also...
For the roads that benefit the Senior Center and the Aquatic Center, which is basically one road in...
That is correct.
And that goes around to the swimming pool to the Aquatic Center?
Yes.
All right. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm going to go ahead and move approval. I would like for there be more clarity in the future, especially since it looks like there were some concerns about, you know, the arena was mentioned in this, and the arena hasn't even been approved, so it hasn't even come before us to the council. So I am a little concerned that it looked like to the public that it's a done deal. So that is my concern, and I would like for us to avoid any discussions about projects that have not come to the council yet.
Yes, ma'am. Much more clarity in the future.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, move approval.
Deputy Mayor Feller?
It says right in our analysis that determination was made to have the Aquatic Center paid for the utility infrastructure upgrades and realignments at this point in order to reduce or eliminate the need to shut them down, the Aquatic Center, Senior Center, and Oceanside Kitchen Collaborative in the future. So staff has worked out the reimbursement agreement with the developer as a condition. So, thank you.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Councilmember Rodriguez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you.
I had asked for seven to be pulled. I'm sure there's a public as well, and I have just a few questions for staff. So to my understanding, that Sudbury has two pending applications, one for a mixed-use project and one for the arena that have been submitted. I'm presuming, am I correct, that both are covered by the City Council-approved development agreement?
Honorable mayor and City Council members, that is correct.
So to be clear, are either of those two projects on land designated as parkland?
No, neither of them are on land designated as parkland.
So is staff in any way negotiating the sale of any El Corazon parkland property?
No.
The two projects, the mixed-use and the arena, will they be coming before the public at a future notice public hearing?
Yes, we anticipate that those projects will be going to hearing probably sometime early next year.
Thank you.
I would also add, I'm sorry, that I do have a brief PowerPoint presentation in case there's any additional information that may not have been covered.
Go ahead.
Honorable mayor and council members, thank you for allowing this opportunity to provide this information. I did have the benefit of seeing some of the correspondence that we did receive regarding this item, and I do think that this presentation may help clarify some of the issues that were raised. So essentially, staff is recommending that the City Council approve an amendment to a professional services agreement with Kaiser Marston and Associates for analysis of the proposed sale and or lease of land to Sudbury Development at El Corazon, increasing the contract price from $47,500 to $66,000, and authorize the city manager to execute this agreement. As a little bit of background, for the public's benefit primarily, the El Corazon specific plan was approved in 2009. The specific plan provides for the development of a variety of recreational, civic, commercial, hospitality, and residential uses. In 2013, the City Council entered a disposition and development agreement, or DDA, with Sudbury for the development of Village Commercial, Oceanside Boulevard, and Hotel Land, designated areas of the El Corazon specific plan, and I do have an exhibit in this presentation that illustrates those areas. In 2019, was just asked by the mayor, Sudbury did submit development applications for 6,000-seat arena. I'm saying 6,000. The number actually varies depending on the configuration, and a 238 mixed-use development on two of the commercially designated sites, sites that are designated for Village Commercial. Both the arena and mixed-use residential projects are allowed uses under the specific plan, subject to review by the Planning Commission, and under the terms of the DDA, which was approved again in 2013, Sudbury does have the right to seek the long-term lease or purchase of land within these commercial areas. Sudbury would now like to exercise its option to purchase or lease these two commercial sites. Sudbury does not have the right to purchase any portion of the specific plan area designated for park use, and they have not expressed a desire to do so. And as I mentioned, this is an illustration of the specific plan area. The two properties in question that Sudbury is interested in leasing or purchasing are the properties shown in yellow, which are designated as Village Commercial. The Village Commercial site on the left, the smaller rectangular, I'm sorry, triangular piece, is the proposed location for the arena, and the Village Commercial location on the right is the property that's proposed for the mixed-use residential. Those are the only two pieces of land in question at this point in time, and the only two pieces of land that are, would be analyzed by Kaiser Marston. As consistent with the terms of the DDA, Sudbury has submitted financial documents to support their purchase or lease request. In response, the city manager had approved a professional services agreement with Kaiser Marston to analyze Sudbury's lease proposal or purchase proposal on behalf of the city. The original agreement, as referenced in the staff report, was for an amount of $47,500. There is some additional analysis needed at this point in time, which is why we're seeking additional funding at an agreement cost not to exceed $66,000. With that, staff recommends that City Council approve the amendment to the professional services agreement with Kaiser Marston Associates for the analysis of proposed sale or lease of land to Sudbury, and with that, I'm available to answer any other question.
Thank you. Mr. Navarro, we have public?
Yes, we have five speakers on item number five. Our first speaker is Colleen Bolch, to be followed by Diane Nygaard. And I believe we are about ready. And Ms. Bolch, you could go now.
Thank you, council members. My first question was why are we entertaining selling any portion of the park, and that still stands. My position on that is we shouldn't sell any of the land. We should lease it, but with what was just disclosed by Mr. Borrego, I understand where we're going with this. I still have one more comment, and that is that the parkland that is there that is quote-unquote "what is supposed to be a park" needs to become dedicated parkland. It doesn't, we don't need to spend, and we ought not spend, any of the money that is in our reserves for our current park and pools. It's not appropriate. Those, that land is not known or dedicated as parkland, and that money should not be spent for anything that is not dedicated parkland. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Diane Nygaard, to be followed by Diane Wolke, to be followed by Sheri Mackin.
Hello?
Yep, and you're ready to go now.
Good. Good evening, mayor and council. Diane Nygaard, I am one of many people who's worked for over 20 years for the dream of El Corazon. El Corazon, a park in the heart of Oceanside. But it's a park that relied on the revenue stream from the lease of a limited amount of commercial land to pay to operate and maintain the park, and that's why many of us are very disturbed to see this calendar item, and that it's been ongoing discussion since last February about selling that land. And since February, but the community is just learning about it now. We really need an open, transparent process that involves the community before we take this important step. We need a plan to replace that revenue stream that will be lost for our park. We need to plan for offsetting public benefit from selling off public land in this way. And until there is such a comprehensive plan, we ask you stop all further discussion and spending of our tax dollars on selling land at El Corazon, including this contract with Kaiser Marston.
All right, our next speaker is Diane Wolke, to be followed by Sheri Mackin, to be followed by Nadine Scott. And we are getting Mrs. Wolke ready? Mrs. Wolke, are you there? Can you unmute yourself? All right, we can move on to the next speaker. We'll come back to you, Mrs. Wolke. Our next speaker is Sheri Mackin. All right, and you could go.
Are we there?
Yep.
It said, can you hear me, Zeb?
Yes.
Okay, mind saying something different? Okay, thank you. Here we go again. What's the rush on the sale of the El Corazon property? Could it be giving back, selling land at El Corazon to Sudbury Development, to your campaign donors before the new council's seated? And to think you want to change the El Corazon charge, excuse me, the El Corazon maintenance account, almost $19,000 to amend an agreement for the proposed sale of the property. The commercial property is supposed to generate funding for the park. If you continue to sell property at El Corazon, we will not have the funding mechanism to build and maintain the park. As it is, it has become a commercial park, not a park for the people of Oceanside. I also want to direct you to an open letter from Oceanside Leagues and the empty promises made to them for field space. It's time to recommit to the El Corazon specific plan. Please rethink your actions and bring this community together to discuss where our needs fit in these negotiations. And Mr. Weiss, you're absolutely correct. Nothing in that park is dedicated parkland, so it's up for grabs. Until it's dedicated, it will not be safe. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nadine Scott, to be followed by Diane Wolke.
Good evening, council and staff. Thank you, Mr. Borrego, for the map and the presentation. I agree with the three earlier speakers. We should not be selling this property. And quite frankly, three of the council members are running for office, and they have the taint of extreme bias for taking money from this particular developer. These are the gross total figures. Weiss has received $44,000. These are not all from Sudbury, but they're from developers. Mr. Feller's received $86,000, including money from Sudbury. Mr. Rodriguez has received $56,000, including money from Sudbury. I do apologize to Mr. Kine. To date, you have not received money from Sudbury, but you have received money from other developers, including the BIA and Jacobs and other real estate concerns. That's Mr. Kine. This land is not parkland. Until it is parkland, all negotiations regarding a proposed arena should stop immediately. One, the taint of bias. Two, we do not have dedicated parkland. And three, you don't sell your public assets because you are not going to generate your revenue stream. What's extraordinarily concerning beyond this is the previous item. Staff worked out reimbursement with the arena center. Why in God's name is staff working out legal agreements with a developer who is still in the process looking for approval? I believe, Mr. Mullen, you're setting up the city for a nice lawsuit because you're promising things to the developer on a project that has not been approved. Let's wait until the council changes. Let's get the taint of all these developer donations off our dais, and let's hold this item until after new council people are seated. Again, the importance of making this dedicated parkland cannot be underestimated. Thank you for your time this evening.
And our last speaker is Diane Wolke. Ms. Wolke, are you there? Ms. Wolke, we're asking you to unmute yourself and to start your video. She ready? It's a new concept we're working out, so... Ms. Wolke, are you there? Unfortunately. Ms. Wolke, can you unmute yourself and start your video? And you could talk whenever you're ready. Okay. Unfortunately, Ms. Wolke is not there, so that concludes the public comment.
Thank you. Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. I want to say that, start off by saying that the comments by the public are, I think, were very good. There's a lot of history here with El Corazon, and the primary purpose for El Corazon is to be a park, a people's park, a park for the community that is going to meet the needs of the community now and into the future. As it is, we have so many demands for field space, for pickleball, for new sports, even lacrosse, having, you know, expanding. What our issues have been over the years or becoming is that many of these sports used to be seasonal, and now they're year-long because of the traveling, because of these organizations. So we have these very, very critical needs of the community that need to be met. I think that this item is basically the cart before the horse because while Peter asked some questions about, well, you know, is there anything that we're doing today that will somehow violate the El Corazon specific plan? He didn't go far enough because is staff negotiating the lease of any land designated for parkland to support the development, the proposed development of arena? And the answer is yes, for parking. Isn't it true that if there is no use of the land that is designated for the public, for the public parkland, that this arena cannot even go forward?
Honorable mayor and City Council members, yes, I can share that part of the parking for the arena would be provided in what is now considered to be Park Site One, but that's one of the areas that we're still negotiating with them, and no decisions have been made whether or not we would support that action.
Right, so the questions that were being made by Peter, Mr. Weiss, didn't go far enough. It gave the impression, oh gee, we're not going to, this project, that's proposed project that will someday come before the council, will not impact the public parkland at all. And that's simply not true. I have from day one asked, what is this benefit to the citizens of Oceanside? How is this going to provide support, financial support, to do what we have asked, what we have asked the staff to do, we've asked this developer to do, and that is to provide, to start working on that specific plan for parkland? I am actually very disappointed. I thought that of the 22 fields that were out there, that the citizens of Oceanside had access to three fields. I had been told that that was the plan, and to date, this is 10 years later, 10 years later, and not one kid has been able to play on those fields. And it's very disappointing. 10 years later, and not one blade of grass has been done for the kids of this community. All I see is benefit to the developer. There's nothing in exchange. I don't understand why we would even be considering for one second to sell land that at this time is devalued because it's, you know, an old sand mine, you know, piece of property, and yet this is the last open space that we have, and how do you value that? It's certainly, you know, more than just some kind of, you know, former salt mining operation, industrial use. This is a huge value to this community. I'm very concerned that we're going down a road where it would be extremely difficult to come back from. I, for one, do not see any benefit to the citizens of Oceanside for an arena at this point. I've been asking for the information, certainly, when that, you know, hopefully that information will be coming forward at some point. I've asked about the impacts to the community in terms of traffic. I've asked, you know, are we going to be getting some part of the sales of ticketing for this sports arena? I've gotten no responses from staff, certainly not, I'm assuming not from the developer. I don't believe we should be contemplating selling at this point at all. In fact, this should never have been on the consent calendar. What I would like to see is that, because not every one of us was here 22 years ago, 23 years ago, I wasn't here on the council 23 years ago, when the vision of El Corazon 23 years ago, I wasn't here on the council 23 years ago, when the vision of El Corazon began to be sent around the city by city staff in coming up with what could happen at El Corazon. This is something that was staff-driven. This was something that was supported by the public completely in 2002, because the council, then council, decided to break that promise and tried to give it away for a golf course. There was a, signatures gathered to put it on the ballot to make this a park, dedicated parkland. It lost by a handful of votes, I want to say 30 votes, because one of our council members decided to try to confuse people. Vote yes, save the park. Vote no, save the parks. I mean, it was very confusing what happened there. But we did, in fact, form a committee to look at this. Each one of the council members had three people to appoint to this commission, and even they came up with this notion of a specific plan, a park, to be funded by the commercial activity that was going to take place here. So I'm very concerned that we have actually walked backwards with these promises to the public. You know, every time I see a kid disappointed that we haven't done what we promised to do, it breaks my heart. I cannot support this at this time. I think that this ought to be going forward for the use first, before we start talking about even sale. It's possible that that was contemplated, but certainly a lot of other things were contemplated that take precedent over that. And for me, it's about how these, this commercial activity is going to be supporting, and I mean financially supporting, the athletic fields, all of the park that we have promised to the community. It's been 10 years. We need to reaffirm our commitment to the specific plan, and so I am going to be voting no. Thank you.
Councilmember Kime?
So the last few days, I've been trying to explain this, and well, I've been trying to understand it and explain it and answer questions, and I get emails and concerns from the public. I want to break this down real simply. We understand it. What are we exactly voting on tonight, Mr. Brago? I mean, just very simple.
Sure. Honorable mayor and council members, so essentially, as mentioned during my presentation, per the approved disposition and development agreement with Sudbury, they do have the right to seek the lease or purchase under different conditions of the commercially designated land that they have rights to develop. What we're voting on tonight, what we're asking the council to vote on tonight, is a contract with a third-party reviewer that would be working on behalf of the city to essentially review the financial information that Sudbury has submitted to support their request, to have a third-party review that and advise the city as to whether or not they are meeting the terms that are spelled out in the disposition and development agreement that spell out when a sale or lease is appropriate.
Well, I think, and that, I mean, even more simply than that, this has been, the Kaiser-Marston analysis has already, has that started already?
Yes, it has.
So it's this, so we're not even voting on that. What, I mean, when you really break it down, tonight, we're simply voting on whether to allocate $18,000, that's it, to that contract. Has nothing, are we voting on anything tonight about selling any parkland or leasing any parkland?
No. Essentially, by approving this item, it would allow Kaiser-Marston to complete its analysis on behalf of the city to allow us to make an informed decision on the offer.
So when you really break it down, we're voting on an extra $18,000 to complete something that, an analysis that we started, correct?
Correct.
So will any decisions tonight be made about any type of sale or lease?
No. And it's important to note, and I should have mentioned this during my presentation, that if there was any sale that was contemplated or any lease at some point, and that would come back as a separate item before this body in a public setting.
And I echo some of these concerns about trust and transparency, and we need to make sure that with the time that's gone into this, that we do this the right way. When would you think, what do you think the soonest that this would even come back to council for a decision if the process played out?
I would say in the first quarter of 2021.
Okay, so it would be a new council?
Yes.
Absolutely. So there's no chance this council is going to hear any decision with land?
Not on, not on the potential sale or lease of this property, no.
Okay. I just want to make that crystal clear to everyone out here. And so also, I want to drill down into the actual sale and lease. That was determined in the DDA, and when?
That's correct, when it was approved in 2013. So essentially, the way that the DDA is structured is, there are provisions of the DDA that provide for the lease or the sale of this property under different conditions, and there's different thresholds that have to be met and demonstrations that need to be met, and that's what we're actually analyzing at this point.
So the decisions we're making tonight are based upon a decision that was made in 2013 and approved by council, correct?
Correct.
And do you remember unanimous council approval in 2013?
It was a unanimous vote on the disposition and development agreement in 2013.
So I've been here since January of last year. This is the first time I'm addressing this, but some of my colleagues voted and approved on this and are now the most vociferous opponents of it. And it's, I just want to make it very clear, this is not something that we asked to bring brought forward. This is not something we're trying to rush a sale through. You know, I would have preferred it waited. And so that's why, you know, I think this is just an administrative function to make sure we have enough money in the contract to do an analysis that was predetermined seven years ago. But if it's going to increase trust and transparency, I don't mind waiting a month. I just, I think the communication could have been better from the city's part. You know, I talked to friends of El Corazon, and I want to make sure that they're also comfortable with the process as well. I mean, it's, a lot of work has been put into this, and we need to make sure to get it right. I'm not concerned about waiting two more weeks or four more weeks. Thank you.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you. I strongly agree with Councilmember Kime's view that this has taken this simple council agenda item on the consent calendar and is blowing way out of proportion. I just want to make comment and refer, I, first off, Ryan, were you making a motion for approval on this?
No.
No, okay. I just want to say, you know, the Friends of El Corazon individuals in our city have worked hard on a plan, but the reality is, as hard as this is to say, the plan is not going to work. When you're dealing with retail, when you're dealing with commercial and enterprises and businesses, the plan that was, came up, that was put forth, you know, 10 years ago, is not going to work today, period. A new plan needs to come up, and we need to look at other options that'll help fund the park, because at this juncture, the old plan is not going to work. It just, it's not feasible, and that's a fact. It's a hard fact, but that's a fact. And so I agree, more planning needs to be put forth, and it's going to have to involve the private sector, but there's not going to be a park anytime soon unless the plan changes. And so I'd like to make a motion on item 7 for approval.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Feller?
Thank you. We took a sand mine that was labeled as a white elephant in '94 and made it the crown jewel of the city, so, and I'm excited about it, that it's still coming. The process we went through in '97 was pretty detailed. People came out, rode the bus, went out and saw the site, worked at the senior center. And they spent a lot of time coming up with things that were actually something that we could be proud of for that area. That was in '97. Yes, we were looking at a lot of things in 2002 and '03, and those didn't work, and Prop M failed, but we have a DDA now that both Councilmember Sanchez and I signed up 100% behind in 2013, and three other council members at the time. This is a nominal fee to make sure we have the money, and what that money is needed for is to make sure it's right. The part that you showed that was, I think it was in an orange on the map, and those two pieces were designated for exactly what we're trying to put there, essentially, and one was for residential, so that's part of this process. There's, if, in fact, we ever do sell that in the next, you know, whatever timeframe it is, that property is, you know, probably has some value that can help go towards the future of what people want as park. It's interesting that one of the speakers talked about a letter to the community about what the sports groups want in our parks, and they want everything that we can give them. I can promise you that. I'm in those parks every day, almost, and sometimes twice a day during seasons, and these kids want a lot of things and love to be able to provide it, and I think we need to figure out how to pay for these things. And the last thing I want to say is, I went back through all my records. Builders and developers have supported me for all of my campaigns, and the reason is because they come in and raise our property taxes, and that's why I support what they do. I've never received that I could find anything from Sudbury, so, and I second the motion.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. I may not have been clear. I should have been clear. The specific plan contemplates certainly, certainly, the notion is that it shall be a long-term lease unless some extraordinary circumstances are met, and that is why Kaiser-Marston is doing this. But there is a basis for this ask, and that is for this arena. And that is my problem with this, is that that is putting the cart before the horse. The developer has been in violation for several years. We've extended the contract with them, and we should stop, because they haven't done one blessed thing. And that is the basis for my, basically, requirement from staff that we start doing what we promised the public that we would do. And if that means, and there are provisions in the contract that should the city decide it wants to take over developing the park, we can do that. We need, we ought to be going forward and looking at grants, because obviously, this developer, it's the last thing on his mind, unfortunately. I mean, if I had seen some good faith from this fellow, and listen, I did vote for this because I thought that the vision was going to be met. And since we have, what, twice? Is it two times that we've extended the contract? Or is it three?
Once.
I believe it's twice. It was, for me, it was in good faith that we would have fields for the kids, at least those two or three fields out of 22. So I feel very strongly, number one, this should not have been on the consent calendar, number two, that we should not be giving away the store, because this is the last open space that we have. And we're looking, I mean, for us, for me, it's about looking towards 2050. Balboa Park wasn't built. Rome wasn't built in a day, whatever that saying is. We should be thinking about what we have promised the residents of the city over 22 years now, and we should not be, as Councilmember Christopher Rodriguez has suggested, you know, doing residential or whatever public, private partnership he thinks. We are talking about losing our park, and this is the first step. Actually, it's, this is probably not the first step, but this is the point in time that I think we have to say, we got to stop, we've got to look at what they are proposing, bring that to the council, and let the council and the people decide. And I hope that if they don't have any benefit to the citizens, that it ought to be a no vote. Thank you.
Councilmember Kime?
Just want to clarify one thing before we vote. I don't have an issue with the contract, but I have an issue with the timing, and that's the unfortunate part of election season, is you take these extremely complicated 20-year processes and projects, and you boil them down and pull tiny pieces out of it and make them very emotionally charged statements that gets everyone really upset. And at the end of the day, you make bad public policy that way. So if we can wait a month and just have clear heads coming into this and make that decision, I'm willing to wait that month. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Feller?
The park only has had two fields available to the citizens of Oceanside from the beginning, and I think actually staff is looking at trying to make that, those two fields available going forward. I know they've been working on it because I'm intimately involved. And the poster that Sherry Macken, or that member had on her wall was a letter from another developer that wants to own the land too, so it's all a big ball.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Councilmember Rodriguez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion approved, 3-2. Kime Sanchez, no.
We'll go to item 13, a general item which is adoption of a resolution authorizing an application for grant funding, an amount of a little over $4.5 million. Megan?
Megan Crooks with the Neighborhood Services Department. I'm here this evening to recommend that you adopt a resolution authorizing an application to the State of California Department of Housing and Community Development for grant funding in the amount of $4,560,000 under the Cal Home Program. Authorize staff to sole-source the implementation of the program to Global Urban Strategies, Inc., and authorize the city manager to execute all documents to participate in the Cal Home Program. Some background, on August 31st, 2020, that's when the State of California announced the grant program opening for application less than two months ago. And several programs are available under this grant program. The two that the city are looking at, is looking at, is first-time homebuyer mortgage assistance and the owner-occupied rehabilitation assistance. Other programs offered by the grant program are technical assistance for self-help housing projects, technical assistance for shared housing projects, ADU and junior ADU assistance, and homeownership development project loans. On September 29th, 2020, there was a grant webinar that staff participated in, and that webinar was highlighting the capacity of applicants to be able to administer the grant programs, and also the competitiveness of the program that you might propose based on your past experience and past performance. On October 7th, well, after the grant webinar, staff had made the decision to go ahead and apply for the grant. However, we were in a category where we were not one of the most However, we were in a category where we were not one of the most competitive grant applicants. We, with our staff resources, we were considering a grant application of $1.2 million, which would equate to approximately 12 loans over a three-year period, which would be approximately four loans, and that would be just the first-time homebuyer program. That's what we had the resources to do within the department and be successful and achieve the grant goals, so that we didn't jeopardize our performance rating with the Cal Home Program for future allocation. So we were moving forward with that process. On October 7th, 2020, staff were forwarded an inquiry from Global Urban Strategies, Inc. as to whether we were applying for this program. And at that time, staff looked into this company, they gave them a call, had a conversation with them about what it is they provide. And they provide grant writing, but they also provide the full administration of the Cal Home Program opportunities, and they have the capacity to do a much larger program than what city staff would be able to offer. October 29th, 2020, is the grant application due date. As I said, it was just shy of a two-month application period. And the city of Oceanside is a qualifying applicant as a local jurisdiction. We have currently a first-time homebuyer program that's at or below 80% area median income through the Cal Home Program. It offers loans up to $56,000, and the loan program has not been very successful due to the fact that those loan amounts are so low. Cal Home has reconsidered these amounts, and this new program coming out goes up to $100,000 per loan. So we do administer current loan and rehabilitation programs in-house, and staff was looking at trying to expand that program to the capacity we thought we could achieve successfully. However, staff resources to meet those grant objectives are slim. So in consideration of the inquiry from Global Urban Strategies, we thought that the partnership could make a stronger application. The application specifically says that if you subcontract your program with somebody who has experience and with somebody who has that track performance, you will acquire a stronger point average on your application scores. Staff went through the checklist ourselves, and we did score much higher going into it with a partnership like this. Global Urban Strategies, Inc. has the experience, they have the capacity to provide a grant application that would offer up to 30 first-time homeowner loans over the course of three years, as well as 14 loans for rehabilitation programs. In addition to that, they would be able to provide the marketing and all of the services related to it, and basically hold homeowners' hands all the way through the process if they were doing a rehab program, all the way through permitting and inspections. And the services for partnering with them would be paid through the grant, so there are no city dollars that would go towards this partnership. With those considerations, staff thought this is a great opportunity to be able to expand the services to the public and would like to request that we sole-source this. Typically, the approximate amount for the contract price will be approximately $510,000 over the course of three years. Typically, that would be something that we do a request for proposal process, but in the matter of the two-month grant period and the deadline being October 29th, staff is requesting that we sole-source it and go into the grant application with partnership to bring this to Oceanside. They have the capacity and specialized expertise, and it will strengthen the application proposal to ensure that we are a more successful grant applicant going into this and receive the funding. Staff, if council approves this this evening, we will enter, the city will enter a memorandum of understanding with Global Urban Strategies in the interim, and that will provide for grant assistance for submitting the application for $5,000. And upon grant award, then we would enter a professional services agreement for a three-year term at minimum, and then they would be providing the city's minimum insurance requirements, they would indemnify the city for services. The services they'd be required to offer would be administration of 30 first-time homebuyer loans, 14 rehabilitation loans, marketing of the program, and the technical assistance to homeowners. Among any other grant requirements, we'll transfer the full grant contract with the state over to them for meeting those objectives. The contract price would be eligible up to 100% of any grant administrative allocations that would come through the grant program, and that comes to approximately $510,000. With that, staff does recommend that the city council adopt a resolution authorizing our application to the State of California Department of Housing and Community Development for grant funding in the amount of $4,560,000 under the Cal Home Program. Authorize staff to sole-source the implementation of the program to Global Urban Strategies, Inc., and authorize the city manager to execute all documents to participate in the Cal Home Program.
Thank you. Mr. Navarro?
There is no public on this item.
Councilor Sanchez?
Thank you. So this is still competitive, though. Are we competing with like cities?
Councilmember Sanchez and City Council, yes, we're competing with like cities throughout the state of California as well as nonprofits.
Okay, so we're not like competing with Los Angeles or City San Diego? It's actually smaller cities like ours?
I cannot say that the larger cities aren't participating in the program, but there are a lot of smaller, like jurisdictions that are competing in the program. Looking at previous awardees, they were mid-sized to smaller cities that were seen, as well as nonprofits that received awards.
The staff report indicates that staff looked into the background of GUSI and thought they did well. What cities did they do something similar?
Councilmember Sanchez and City Council, I don't have the full list with me right now. They did have up to a dozen cities that they're doing grant writing work with in the Los Angeles area. Two cities that, we did put calls out to approximately six or seven cities that they were doing implementation with as well. We heard back from two, and both of them gave them high recommendations, both for their grant writing and also for their implementation practices.
And which two were those?
One was Bell Gardens, and the other is Rosemead. Bell Gardens never had a Cal Home Program previously, and so they went straight into being able to offer this with a subcontractor. And the city of Rosemead previously had staff implementing their program, but due to some staffing changes, didn't at the time, and they were working with GUS to do grant writing, and they offered to implement the program as well, and so they switched over to having it subcontracted.
So you still haven't heard from the other five?
We haven't heard back from the other five, no.
Okay. Are there other organizations like, companies like GUSI that do this kind of third-party with governments?
There are lots of agencies and companies that do the grant writing, but I haven't come across one that does the grant writing as well as the implementation sources. I haven't done a huge deal of research in that, given that we didn't do an RFP process. And then there are nonprofits that do it, but they typically, because they're qualifying entities, they apply for their own grant funds.
That was my next question about why we skipped over doing RFP process. It's because...
Councilmember Sanchez and City Council, we currently run a Cal Home Program, so as staff were reviewing the grant application, they took it upon themselves to think that we would continue to operate our Cal Home Program, and that we could expand to the capacity that we were able to.
So it's a timing, timing thing at this point?
Timing, and yeah. And then when we did hear from Global Urban Strategies, it was less than two weeks ago, and there's no time to run a full RFP process. The grant is due next week, and we're fully prepared to get it submitted on time for the deadline, but not to be able to do a competitive process. And they do have to be written into the grant.
Right, that's what I thought. And this is for a three-year period? Do the funds all have to be used up within three years?
The performance objective is to issue the number of loans that you state you're going to within those three years, yes. Now, their typical, and the Cal Home Program may come back with a contract that gives us loan terms, but they're going to be typical 30-year loans. And once they start repaying after 15 years, interest is forgiven, but the principal will be due to the city, and then we can continue to repurpose those loans out to new loans again. However, we haven't gotten to the extent of how we'll administer it beyond the three years.
So it's potentially, it could potentially go on beyond the initial three years and be a self-funded program, but we're talking about over a 30-year period?
Correct.
That may, where we may be seeing the first returns.
Correct, yes. And then as we issue any new loans, we would be subject to having 5% available to us to administer those loans.
The 14 owner-occupied rehab program, those funds will probably come back sooner?
It's possible because they'll probably be smaller loans, but it will depend on what those loan terms are, and I believe they still have the 20 to 30 years. Our rehab loans tend to get repaid sooner. We process more repayments on those than we do on the first-time homebuyers.
Thank you. Well, in light of the timing, you know, it's really good to have heard from a third-party like this. Would have been nice to have heard sooner to be able to get more information about them. Sounds like staff feels comfortable with at least the two cities that they heard back from. So I'm going to go ahead and move approval and hope that we get the grants.
Yes.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Feller?
Thank you. So do you feel like you, Bell Gardens and Rosemead, neither of them are our size as far as a city, but do you have confidence that this is favorable for us?
Deputy Mayor Feller and City Council, yes, I do feel confident that it will be favorable for us and our residents that would apply for the loans. I think it's, we're going to be able to more than double than what staff would have been able to offer on our own. And offer additional services in assisting through the rehab piece.
Is there any connection for what we just awarded, $500,000, for something similar to this that we are doing? Is that, is there a way to connect these?
Deputy Mayor Feller and City Council, they wouldn't necessarily be connected. They're going to be two separate programs, they're two different funding sources. You know, city staff could always offer the opportunity to subcontract services, but the program that we brought forward last, in early September, that it was intended to be staff-implemented along with pre-approved lenders, local lenders.
So if this is, do they award the grant pretty quickly?
We, the estimate timeline from the state is that we will hear about awards in February of 2021.
The 30 loans, is that, am I correct?
Correct. 30 first-time homebuyer loans, yes.
First-time homebuyer loans, and so if that's $56,000, what is that, one and a half million?
These loans through this grant program will be up to $100,000.
Okay.
Our current Cal Home Program is only up to $56,000.
Okay. All right. Well, I heard Brian second the motion, so I'll shut up. Thanks.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
I, I'm actually really excited to see this item. One of the first things I noticed after being elected was a lot of the unused funds from grant programs, and I think a lot of that had to do with the, you know, the lack of staff and resources to market the programs and really push forth to our community to be able to utilize these grant funds. So I'm excited to see this go, you know, move forward and the potential for other third-party companies to write, you know, additional grants and to help administer them so that, you know, the city of Oceanside, the residents can really benefit to the fullest extent, and we can really use all the funding that we receive. So thank you very much. I intend on supporting this item.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. Councilmember Rodriguez, how do you vote? Motion approved, 5-0.
We'll go to 14, which is acceptance of the fiscal year 2019, 24th quarter financial reports.
Tonight, I'm presenting the fourth quarter ending June 30th, 2020. It's preliminary financial report, status report, and budget adjustments and transfers. Staff submits the preliminary fourth-quarter financial status report and recommends approval of the fourth-quarter budget adjustments and transfer. As you know, the year was, the end of the year was challenging. We had quite a bit of adjustments done, not only on the revenue side in the areas of TOT, some lease revenue, and sales tax. However, as you will see, the city of Oceanside ended up in a positive note, exceeding in revenues. It was budgeted at $158,235, and it came in at $162,710. It's 104% of budget, and staff did an amazing job of bringing in expenditures with the reduced budget at $164,924. I'll go into more detail in later slides. So just to note, the reductions were $4.5 million in revenues, $1.32 million in MNO, and then we used the personal vacancy factor to balance that. So property tax, 103% of budget. It was increased 5.3% over last year, and we're looking to see a similar increase, it's projected for the next year. For 2223, or 2122, we're in 2021, we're not, haven't analyzed that yet, but at least for this current fiscal year, we're looking at a similar increase at 5.6%. Sales tax, surprise, $108, 108% of budget. We actually exceeded some of the trends of the state or counties. We exceeded in the areas of fast food. There was some of the areas that we, even in some of the general consumer goods. So Oceanside people spent money. We were able to also benefit because of our increases in a larger percent of the county pool, so, as well as Measure X, which we'll look at that as well, too. So for this year, we're still trending very similar. So for this year, we're still trending very similar. So I'll have more information as we get into the fourth—for the next year. TOT, that was a challenge. We did drop the budget significantly, and we still came out about $1.2 million short of what our original budget was. But we did pick out—pick up quite a bit in last June when it opened back up, and we had had some renters, short-term rentals, being done regardless of the government direction. So this continues—transient occupancy tax continues to be a challenge. Although we're seeing greater stays and so forth, we're not quite up at the levels we were prior, so. Happens. Through June 30th, general fund expenditures. Part of the reason the expenditures were so high—we did transfer some funds for various items such as the unfunded liability paydown, the pier brace replacement project, another gen—a big project is the general plan update, and the El Corazon infrastructure improvement. We had a big impact to police for the COVID-19 and civil unrest that we weren't able to get full compensation. We have CARES funds, and we have some FEMA money for COVID, but nothing for the unrest. And that impacted their overall budget. And here it kind of outlines what we're at with COVID. $3.3 million from the county, and $1.1 million from the state. FEMA, we will be closing up once we get to an endpoint, and hopefully that'll be sooner than later. And they will take over a lot of the items that we—we—we—so that we can fully utilize all. We're going to fully utilize the FEMA money reimbursements as well as the CARES. So we're carefully analyzing what reimbursement should be done. And Measure X, great year for Measure X. One—as you know, in 2019, it was effective. $15.97 million has been received through June 30th, 2020. As you know, we get most of our payments are based on the holiday sales and so forth, but this is an area that was—it continues to be benefiting from the COVID, all the online sales. So whereas with the regular sales tax, Bradley Bird—they—we have to share the internet sales with the county pool, and that's based on our poll. This—for Measure X, we get 100% of the—the extra half cents. So in fact, we're going to look at seeing that continue into the new—this current fiscal year. Recommendation: Staff recommends City Council approve the fourth-quarter budget adjustments and transfers. Thank you.
We have two members of the public that wish to speak on item number 14. Our first speaker is Colleen Bulch—or Bulk, I'm sorry, to be followed by Sheri Mackin. And I think we're ready for you, Colleen. And you could go now.
Thank you, Councilmembers. Item 14, I just have one question, and it's an item on Attachment A, where it states that CM Rodriguez, and then it states fringe benefit, $27,300, Councilmember revised insurance mid-year. I'm curious as to who facilitated the insurance change, because there's something that we all have to do, and that's stay within our open enrollment period. And of which, by the way, I do get my insurance through the city of Oceanside, through my husband. So I was just wondering why this was allowed, and the change was done mid-year per the note. And why are—why are we paying—why are the citizens paying for that? And that's my only question. It could be a legitimate charge, but it just kind of jumped out at me like, well, nobody else can change mid-year. So just curious. Thank you very much for your time.
And our next speaker is Sheri Mackin.
Hello, thank you. Excuse me? Shut up. I would ask that the City Council revise capital—the gee, golly, having a hard time here. Thank you. I would ask that the City Council revise capital expenditures with regards to road repairs, slurry seal, and street restoration slash asphalt overlay line items. Many streets west of College are in terrible shape. Several in South O are in the range between 40 and 70, as noted by staff. Some streets have not had road repairs for well over 15 years, and some longer than that. There's grass growing in the middle of the streets. There are potholes and crevices. And when I see people walking down the street, because several streets in South O also don't have sidewalks, and this is putting the city at risk as to trip and fall. So I would suggest that you look at that item—those two items and move some things around and actually, you know, let's do something for the residents and—and give them some streets that they're not embarrassed to have someone come over to. It's long overdue, and again, I've been told that it's not in the budget. You don't have the money for it. Well, heck, we got Measure X money. We're using it for studies for the Strand and downtown and wherever. Why don't we use them in our neighborhoods before tourist areas? So thank you.
And that concludes the public comment. Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. Question about Measure X. Staff had anticipated we would be seeing possibly up to $11 million every year. And what we're reporting—what you're reporting is 15, almost 16 million from April through June of the following year. So that's a few more months. Did we pretty much hit 11 million in—in a 12-month period?
Yes, we did. In the prior year, we had just a little—like, 3.7 million. So overall, we are meeting our budgeted goals.
But that was for it. Sorry.
Oh, I thought I put one in.
That was—that was for a shorter—a very short period of time, is that right?
It was only for the period of April through June for the 2019—18, 19 fiscal year. So 1920, we had 100—we had entire year. And also, some of the businesses—it took them a while to kid up to speed on it, because it was a big change.
Right.
So we had all that happening, but yes, we did meet all our monies.
Now, this is through COVID. This is through COVID. Do—we expect it'll be a little higher than 11 million? Possibly.
Possibly, because based on the online sales alone—I don't know about you, but myself—I'm finding I'm doing more and more online, using delivery or sit in the parking lot and have it taken out. And I think that might be a little bit of our new model. You know, the brick-and-mortar stores, not as much, but we're still wanting the goods, and we're wanting them quickly.
Right.
So as long as we order through the online, Measure X does benefit as well as in store, but—
Right.
Before, it'd have to go through the county pool.
Now, the—the revenue results were higher, which is really good for our city. And that pared down the money we used for reserves from 9.23 down to 2.2 million.
That is correct.
Yeah. We didn't do anything with the maintenance and operations, which got cut 1.3. How are we doing with that?
As far as meeting the budgets?
As far as getting—getting through without having that—those extra funds that were going to—that was going to be in—in the MNO?
Actually, staff has been very good about just ordering the minimum—minimum of what we need. MNO, we have our contracted services, of course, those go first, and those continue to have their increase for their CPIs or whatever they are. We've also benefited for the McCareys funds. So any extras related to COVID, including laptops, because we do have people working remotely—
From home.
And actually, it's being recommended to do so.
Right.
So we were able to use those funds to buy those laptops or other equipment that normally would come out of your regular MNO budget.
Thank you. Those are all the questions that I have, so I'm going to move that we accept the report and approve the budget adjustments. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Feller?
Thank you. I guess it's lucky we had Walmarts and Targets and Winco's. And I spent a lot of time shopping empty shelves during the—those six months. I was just amazed that they're—they're back up to normal now and—and everything—the only thing you can't find is Clorox wipes, I think.
They had some at Ralph's last weekend.
Oh, wow. And—and I—I think you—you saw we didn't have to do really anything, and our property tax is up. And so that's the benefit of sometimes—it—it's a great benefit of building enough new housing, changes in—in—in properties that maybe are pre-1979. You know, there's a lot of issues that come with property tax, and that's—that's been a saving grace for our city. So I just want to commend you for always having that thorough—thorough review, and that's great. Thanks. I'll second.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yeah, I just would like to concur on the theme of my colleagues, that I think staff did an amazing, amazing job as COVID-19 was on the horizon, under Deanna's leadership and your leadership, Jane, and really putting together a realistic plan and, you know, cutting—cutting expenditures where we needed to cut. And it's with your leadership and our common sense policies as a majority on the council to look at opening our businesses in a safe manner, utilizing those common sense policies that, you know, the essential businesses we're opening. I—I think a mix of all of our efforts is—is why we're standing here today, and we're seeing overages, and I look forward to continuing that. And I'm really excited for the future of Oceanside and the direction we're heading to continue to cut wasteful spending, to—to look at improving our roads and improving our parks and keeping sand on our beaches. And it boils down to being able to generate revenues and spend my—spend our finances wisely. And so this is—a—this is a—a perfect picture of the direction we want to go as a city, and so I'm definitely going to support this item. Thank you.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote. Councilmember Rodriguez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Mr. Navarro, we'll go to Communications on off-agenda items.
Our first speaker on off-agenda items is David Newman, to be followed by Elaine Safoya, to be followed by Sheri Mackin. There are currently six requests to speak on off-agenda items. All right. Mr. Newman, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, you're free to go.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Oceanside staff and council have put a cannabis tax on the ballot this November, designated Measure M. Measure M intends to hit the local cannabis businesses at every level of the supply chain, adding an additional 17% to 28% tax on the product, and that includes CBD. Once the state tax and excise tax are included, the total tax to the end user will be a whopping 38% to almost 51%. Businesses pass taxes on onto the consumer, and without an adult-use market, the people that will be burdened with this tax will be the medical marijuana users. Any revenue generated by these excessive taxes go into the general fund and used by council at its discretion, with no guarantee it will be—it would be benefit the citizens of Oceanside in any way. The rebuttal to the argument against Measure M, and signed by current City Councilmember Esther Sanchez and Oceanside Planning Commissioner Kyle Crayhill, indicate that these taxes are needed to keep these businesses from being profitable, while businesses that are not profitable close, and new businesses will not want to come to our city. It's clear that Measure M is nothing more than a tool to dismantle the cannabis industry in Oceanside and dismay any further push to bring this industry to the city. Now is not the time to put—push businesses out and close our doors to an industry that has operated in the shadows for over 80 years. Measure M is an unwarranted, overbloated burden on the end user and will do nothing to disrupt the black market. Vote no on excessive taxing of medical marijuana. Vote no to killing an industry. Vote no on Measure M. Thank you. My name is David Newman. I'm a current resident and business owner.
Thank you. Our next public speaker is Elaine Safoya, to be followed by Sheri Mackin, to be followed by Kelly McCormick. And we have Elaine Safoya. All right, Elaine, whenever you're ready. Oh, and please unmute yourself.
Okay, is that better?
Yes, you may go.
Okay. I recently voted, actually, and I voted no on Measure L. What I want to tell you is—I'm sure a lot of people were bombarded with big glossy flyers from the developer for yes on L, that the flyers don't mention that their project is a development and not a farm. The name of the project itself is misleading to the citizens of Oceanside. There is no truth in advertising, one of the criteria for advertising something to the public, on their promotions either. So I want to let you know about that, and they're in violation of that accepted criteria. The other thing was the traffic here on North Santa Fe. And we had a big crash last weekend at nighttime, somebody speeding, and he went off the road onto the sidewalk and hit the street lamp. And of course, it brought a big commotion, and the light was flickering, and I don't know how much of the damage was. The speed limit of 50 needs to go back down to 35. It's not safe. People walk on both sides of the road. There's a bus stop on either side. There are houses on both sides of the road, even though it's a double-lined road, but it's not wide enough like Oceanside Boulevard. So I think—I would suggest it goes down to 35 miles per hour. And the last thing is your old cemetery right by the mission. It's been brought to my attention that it's very disheveled, and people don't know who really owns that property. I was suggested that go into the deeds—I guess they held it—the county in Carney Mesa. I'm not familiar with this. And somehow, it's—somebody take responsibility to clean it up. It—it's an eyesore. So those are the items that I had to say tonight, okay? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Elaine. And our next speaker is Sheri Mackin, to be followed by Kelly McCormick, to be followed by Becky Rapp. We have Sheri on tap there. Okay, Sheri, you're free to go.
I just want to point this down here on my backdrop, please. Please notice this is Sudsbury Properties over here highlighted in yellow, and this is the Board of Directors for the Building Industry Association. Hi, my name's Sheri Mackin. I've lived in South O, District 3, for 40 years. I'm a retired Oceanside teacher, former deputy mayor for the city of Oceanside. I've served as Oceanside's representative on Sandag and NCTD and several subcommittees of both agencies. I'm proud to say that I've secured multimillion-dollar grants for the city of Oceanside for keeping our beaches open and sand on them. I'm not beholden to developers or special interest groups. My campaign funding comes from residents and small business. I support working families, neighborhoods, reducing traffic congestion by putting housing where it belongs. Real smart growth. I believe in creating and retaining our parks, trails, and open spaces, dedicating El Corazon Parkland, and ensuring that during the tough times, resident services are not compromised. Massive overbuilt projects, like we continue to see downtown, strip us of our character and affordability. Developers continue to make their money and leave without meeting the need for affordable homeownership and leave us with a downtown that is sadly unrecognizable. Developers and special interests have loaded the war chest of the District 3 race. Appointed Councilmember Keim has received over $42,000 from developers and special interest groups, $15,000 of which was from the BIA, which Sudsbury is a donor and on the Board of Directors. the Board of Directors. These people have projects that come before him for a vote. This needs to change, and I am committed to change. Just imagine, no more special interest city council votes that increase traffic and cause congestion and raise taxes. El Corazon becomes a park, not a commercial development. Building affordable housing by stopping developers from buying their way out of doing so. Traffic solutions that improve your commute while protecting neighborhoods and our children. Sandy beaches for residents, not just tourists. Vote for your family and our neighborhoods. Vote for me, Sheri Mackin, for District 3 City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kelly McCormick, to be followed by Becky Rapp, to be followed by Terri Ann Skelly. And we have, okay, we're almost there. Okay. All right, Mrs. McCormick, you're ready to go. Can you unmute yourself?
Sorry?
All right, there you go. Thank you. You may start.
Thanks. I'm Kelly McCormick. I'm the parent of two teens, and I'm a public health educator. This is the month that many schools recognize Red Ribbon Week, a time when attention is focused on the prevention of tobacco, alcohol, and drug use by teens and adolescents. I've been giving presentations this month to students and parents about the risks of e-cigarette use, especially by those under 25, because their brains are still developing and can more easily be hijacked by drugs. Last year, former FDA Commissioner Scott Gottlieb declared the explosive growth of vaping an epidemic, and since then, the number of teens vaping has continued to rise. According to a new federal government study, nearly 4,000 teens a day try marijuana for the first time. The survey reveals that most kids do not believe it's harmful. That's a departure from previous years and one of the factors contributing to increased use. The perception of harm goes down when teens are bombarded with pro-marijuana messages and advertising. Peer-reviewed studies confirm that marijuana use can lead to serious mental health problems, including depression, anxiety, paranoia, psychosis, and the early onset of schizophrenia. Teens who use marijuana are more likely to contemplate and attempt suicide. And if you've ever been around a teen or a family experiencing a mental health crisis due to marijuana use, you know that it's heartbreaking. As a society, we must be willing to acknowledge the truth and do more to protect our children and community from the commercial marijuana industry. Just like big tobacco, it is a profit-driven and predatory industry. I respectfully ask, is it really wise to put out the welcome mat in Oceanside? Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Becky Rapp, to be followed by Terri Ann Skelly. All right, Becky, you are on. You could go at any minute, anytime you're ready.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Becky Rapp. As a parent and community member, I am deeply concerned with the negative accusations made towards the public on October 7th during Item Number 15, public hearing of the marijuana manufacturing facility on Ordway. The public has a right to voice concerns and share their point of view when it comes to the health and safety of their community, especially when a business specializing in marijuana vaping equipment during the COVID pandemic. It's unfortunate that the public was required to email in their comments, yet the applicant's attorney was able to speak out and refute comments made by the public, calling them by name while trying to discredit them. Sadly, the city council allowed this to happen. Although marijuana is permitted in the state of California, it does not make it safe or beneficial to your physical or mental health. It's important that city officials recognize and support the importance of education. Create an environment that enables and encourages good and wise choices to be made in a public space that facilitates a fair or level playing field for both parties to be shown respect when they communicate their positions or opinions, even when they differ from your own. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Terri Ann Skelly. And whenever, do we have her ready? And Ms. Skelly, can you unmute yourself?
Good evening, city council members. Tonight, I wanted to make you aware of the information I received as a parent of three young men regarding the county's meth-strike force meetings. I learned there that last week, the U.S. Customs and Border Protection, CBP, issued a press release. CBP seized more than 3,014 pounds of methamphetamines, 64 pounds of heroin, 29 pounds of fentanyl powder, and almost 37 pounds of fentanyl pills, worth an estimated $7.2 million. This was part of the second-largest methamphetamine bust along the southwest border in the history of the agency. The press release stated that smugglers will try every way possible to try and get their product across the border. This massive seizure prevented over $7 million worth of deadly drugs from entering our country, thus saving countless lives from addiction and overdose deaths, including vulnerable young adults. Parents are concerned that meth use and opioid use is increasing again, and we wonder why. Our experience as parents suggests our elected officials, indifferent to high potency marijuana products, is normalizing overall drug use. Parents respectfully ask the city council to consider again the wisdom of setting aside your land use regulations to accommodate a marijuana factory. Thank you. Good evening.
And thank you. And that concludes the public comment.
With that, we'll go to our general council member comments. Councilmember Sanchez.
Well, I did want to do a point of personal privilege. I don't know where we're at.
We're on before 17.
I'd like to do the point of personal privilege. With respect to the comments by Mr. Newman, we respectfully disagree on, you know, the issues sometimes. But what I do want to make clear is, as to Measure M, the cannabis tax, staff recommended the lowest tax in the county at 4% to 6%. And while cannabis is obviously legalized, it is up to the cities to regulate. And the states are not giving us the money to regulate. The state is taking the funds and putting them in the general fund for the state. But for us, we have to put something on the ballot if we, in fact, want to support having some level of commercial activity with respect to cannabis. We are at medicinal at this point. The tax that is being proposed by Measure M would apply to recreational should a future council decide to move in that direction. 4% to 6%, yes, he was right that that would go into the general fund. It would be for a future council to decide how the money would be spent. The recommendation from staff, of course, is that it go towards the regulation, and it's also staff's recommendation to a future council that it be set at the lowest, which would be 4%. Again, the lowest in the entire county. Vista has it set at, I think, 8%? I believe it's 8% or 10%. I forget. 7% or 8%? Yeah. So what we're looking for really is to ensure that it would pay for itself. Now medicinal, if you get a card, then a medical card for it, then you do not pay a tax. So that is something that you would get from the county. So basically, those are the comments I wanted to make. Certainly up to the public, whether they will be voting in favor or not on Measure M. There were several representatives, including mayor, who wrote in support of it, basically to be able to support staff's activity towards making this actually work in Oceanside. And those are my comments.
Deputy Mayor.
On the point of personal privilege. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Feller.
Thank you. First, I want to preface what I'm going to say, that the building industry does pay a lot of bills for our city and our staff to be here. If we didn't have building going on, we wouldn't need staff. So I think it's important. One of our members in the public, who always ends her emails in "be kind," kindly sent me a reminder that in 2011, I did get $500 from Sudsbury. So I'm kindly thanking her for reminding me. I probably overlooked it as I was going through, so I apologize. But it was $500, and I definitely think that it was an oversight as far as that goes. And that's all I have.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you very much. So just wanted to invite the public, this coming Sunday, October 25th, a major event, a major community event. Everyone's invited at Alex Road Skate Park, also known as Prince Park. It starts at 11:00 a.m. and it ends at 1:00 p.m. At noon, they'll be announcing the first-of-its-kind United We Skate Prince Park Skateboard Exchange Program, which they will be providing free skateboards to any child that needs a replacement. And one of the main organizers is Poseidon Foundation. It's a nonpartisan organization that has an extensive network of advocates that support the homeless, homeless youth, orphaned youth, foster youth, and at-risk youth in Oceanside. And so I'd love to see everybody there. I plan on being there again this Sunday, October 25th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00, and the main ceremony will be happening at 12:00 o'clock. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Yes, thank you. I meant to, under council items, I wanted to invite Mr. Navarro to say a few words about the election coming up and how the city clerk's office is going to be working that election. We have four days for working at the poll, for actually when you can vote at the polls. I ran into folks who noticed that their polling place had changed. So could you say a few words about that, Mr. Navarro?
Of course. Thank you. Honorable mayor, council members, Councilmember Sanchez. This election is already bizarre enough as it is, but I just want to clear up some misinformation regarding voting this year at the polls. Everybody's going to get a mail-in ballot. Some people have already voted. Several have already voted. But if you want to vote in person, you could go to any of the 14 voting places in Oceanside to drop off your ballot, or you could look at your sample ballot and look at your polling place. I normally vote at the Chavez Resource Center, but this year, I'm voting at the Laurel Elementary School. And there's only 14 polling places in Oceanside. So it's very important that you look at your sample ballot to see where you will be voting at this year, because it's going to be different than what you're normally used to voting at. And if you still don't know where your polling place is at, you could call the ROV, go to SDvote.com, and you could find your polling place that you could vote at. And there is some concern about voting by mail. You could go to the polling place, tell them I would like to vote in person. Your mail-in ballot is already automatically canceled. You don't need to bring it with you. They will print you up a brand-new ballot there on the spot, and you would vote as you would on Election Day. And you could turn in your ballot to any of the poll workers there, just like you would on Election Day. The polls are going to be open starting Halloween, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., from Halloween to November 2nd. And then on November 3rd, Election Day, the polls are going to be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And again, you could drop off your ballot at any of those polling places. And in fact, you could drop off your ballot now at any of the four ballot drop-off locations in Oceanside, which are the two branches of the library, Civic Center and Mission, as well as the YMCA, Youth and Family Services on Barn Street, and the Joe and Mary Matino Family YMCA on Mesa Drive. You could just go there, drop off your ballot. You can't vote in person there, but the ROV poll workers are there to answer any questions you may have. We receive phone calls about fake ballot boxes. Just know that those are the only four official ballot drop-off locations in Oceanside, and they should look like a red cooler, and you just slip your ballot in there, and you could even get an "I voted" sticker from any of the poll workers. If you can, if they have official ROV IPA, you know, get one while you're there.
So at the libraries, it's actually in the libraries?
It's actually going to be in the community center, just right outside the community center in the courtyard. And there is signage that directs people to where the ballot drop-off locations are going to be at, at all the different locations. I myself have went out and talked to the poll workers, and there is ample signage on where to drop it off, and at least two poll workers are there to answer any questions.
So there are no signs of fake places in Oceanside at this time, right?
Not that I'm aware of, but there was some deep concern from some individuals that have called our office. And we do have a list in our office as well, because we have had people come to the city clerk's office to drop off a ballot, and we've kindly walked them to the community room, outside the community rooms, to vote.
And you will still be willing to get calls and emails about questions, even though you're telling people, "Go to the ROV, SDvote.com," but your office will still respond to questions?
We will continue responding to questions all the way up to end of day on Election Day.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your job, for your work.
Thank you.
Deb.
Mr. Mullin.
Thank you. Item 17 is the second reading and adoption of an ordinance of the city of Oceanside, amending Chapter 29(a) of the Oceanside City Code to prohibit specified activities in the channel and harbor entrance.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Move adoption.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Councilmember Rodriguez, how do you vote?
I, yes.
Motion approved, 5-0.
And with that, we'll adjourn to 3:30 on Wednesday, November 4th.